With that, you may be seated. We have a real pile of members, Ms. Orange.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Harin, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Krueger at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we, on the proven agenda, we do have, we're going to amend it, is that correct, Ms. Orange?
That's correct. We need to add item 12B, the DMV grant, and item 12C, Towne and Gate City request.
What was 12B again?
12B is DMV grants.
I need most approve the agenda as amended, do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Ms. Krueger made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, I said second, all fair votes sent aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the amendments from July 11th, August 5th, and August 18th. We'll do them separately, I think, July 22nd, I don't think I was here once, but... So we'll go with the July 22nd amendments first, that's one I missed, Rita. One of them I didn't really want to watch.
I thought you missed one of the budget amendments.
Maybe. Anyway, if everybody attended, I don't remember them doing them as a whole, if everybody attended all of them. So let's go with that, we'll approve all three at the one time, so July 22nd, August 5th, and August 18th. If you had a chance to read those and look at those, anyway, we need most approve those amendments, that's presented to you.
Agreed.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. All fair votes sent aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is assist expression period, and I'll read this short statement, and we will go into that. Assistant expression period is the point of the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from in the county, and or what organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike, if no one has signed up to speak, then have them, Ms. Orange.
They have, ma'am.
Okay. We have no particular order, we just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered, actually, because it's an expression, so at this point, we are in assist expression. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. Make a note, is it in?
Make a note. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to inform the board and the public that our hazardous waste pickup day that we have annually will be held on September the 19th, that's a Saturday. And it'll be from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Gate City Flea Market parking lot. We'll be advertising in our papers and flyers out in the community as we finalize our procurement with vendors upon that. But that will be the day.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Alright, if not, we'll come out assist expression period, we don't have anything to discuss on it, so, but that's... Is that either pretty good turnout build, and you have that, a lot of people responding?
It's a pretty big turnout.
Good. As far as if you've got stuff that you can't take to the dump, you know, paint, oil, stuff like that, that's hazardous, you gotta be good time to do that, so anyway, it's a good thing, glad to do that. Our next item is a public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance adopting incorporating motor vehicle provisions and other crimes and offenses of the Code of Virginia and repealing. Orders is 2002-0, 2014-02, 2019-02, 2019-03, and 2019-04, 2019-05, and 2019-06. What this ordinance will do, it will change the collection, it will come to the county rather than going to the state, is that correct, Ms. Orange? I believe that's what I read. And so, with that, we will have a public hearing on it, and we'll go into the public hearing on this, on the possible adoption of this order. Anyone wishing to speak there, assist, sorry, public hearing, anyone? Anyone wishing to speak, will come out of the public hearing, we will, if you had a chance to look at it, as to who was, how this is gonna be done, if you want to discuss it, make a motion, whatever you want to do, whatever. I think it's a good idea to do that, and hopefully, it will put more money into the county rather than going to Richmond, and Mr. Andy Johnson, when he was here, he came up with that idea, I thought it was great, it's gonna work for us that we can do that, so I think it's a good idea to do it.
Yep, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Alright, Mr. Tipton has made a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Bricky has seconded, is there any discussion or any questions from anybody on the board? All fair votes sent aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so the motion carried, alright. Then we have item eight, Virginia Department of Transportation discontinuance of roads, so we have someone here to speak on that, if you think.
Good morning, Mr. Kevin, good morning to the board. I believe everybody knows me here, I'm Joey Mullins with the VDOT Wise Residency, Assistant Resident Engineer there. Today, I have with me Mr. John Bowling, he's going to speak some regarding the discontinuances, but first, before that, I have Mr. Todd Bowling, no relation that I know between the two, but he's gonna be here to speak a little bit about the bridge project on Route 65 and as well as the US 23 Access project that's getting ready to start up, so. Glad I'll let Todd speak.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, board.
Good morning.
First off, I would like to issue an apology to the board supervisors, I spoke to this board last month. The information I presented was in fact erroneous, the information I presented, I thought at the time, was true and the most accurate information, it turns out, in hindsight, it was not, and I would offer my sincere apologies to the board regarding that. I also wanted to address the board, VDOT is getting ready to start the 23 Access Management Project on, at Moxon Gap between Webber City and Gate City. We have a pre-construction conference scheduled for tomorrow morning with Estes Brothers out of Jonesville. They were the apparent low bidder on this project. The fixed completion date for this project is September of, excuse me, I'm getting tongue tied here, September 24th of 2021. And the project is divided into four phases. On the first phase, we're gonna have a permanent lane closure in the travel lane, the right lane on southbound 23 to accommodate the widening of 23 and moving 23 to the south a little bit there. The passing lane will be open. Phase two, we're gonna switch and we'll have the travel lane in the northbound direction closed, and that's to do some drainage work on 23 through there. It will construct a parking ride location during that and relocate Route 619 during that. Phase three, we're gonna close both passing lanes in each direction to accommodate the construction of the median and the, and finish the drainage work. And then the fourth phase will be done under temporary lane closures, it would just be final paving, striping, signs, the, pretty enough the project, if you will. So, if there are any questions about this project, I'll be more than happy to take them.
How long will this project last?
The fixed completion date is September 24th, 2021.
Okay. You know, it's gonna be a considerable congestion there, anytime we do any paving or anything all down through there, it's always, it's gonna be, so I'm hoping that people will be aware of that, and they can, it's gonna be, for a year, it's gonna be a prompt.
Yes.
So we'll do all they can to try to remedy that.
Yes, and I have talked with our folks in traffic engineering about maybe changing the timing of the lights at Watlow Gap and at the intersection right here at Gate City, to maybe help with the traffic flow through there, to give priority to those folks mainlining coming through.
Is it gonna be just daytime, or is it gonna be some night construction?
It will probably mostly daytime, I don't know exactly what the contractor's plans are as far as when they're planning to work. The lane closures will be permanent. And I think there will be some drainage work that will probably be better served for them to do at night, and they will probably do those at night. It's what our anticipation is being, when we look at the plans, we try, kinda try to build it as if we were the contract party, so.
Well, then, have drainage problems, or if it rains any at all, you go through it, man, you gotta really hold on to the wheel.
I live in Webber City, I run through there every day.
You know what it is.
It is my goal, if we accomplish nothing else with this project, we'll drain.
Drain, good, good. That's always been an issue for a long time, so, and we have to lots addressing.
Yes, sir. Any further questions?
Any questions from anybody on the board? It's a good project, what's cause of this project?
Um, the low bid was $2,562,980.50.
Alrighty. Any comment, any questions? Give appreciate what VDOT's doing, and they've been a good partner with us, so.
Thank you, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Once people, I think, get used to the, what it's gonna be, maybe they will work it to where they can get through there without any major congestion, but...
Yes.
Oh, the paving projects in Apache have been a nightmare.
They have.
And, but I think when people, they don't know what's going on, they kinda slow down more than they should, and so...
Well, hopefully, hopefully, we'll be in and out quicker than we anticipate, but, you know, right now, we anticipate it's next September.
Well, that's right out of here, so, it's, you know, if there's paint, sometime when you grow, so that's what it's gonna be.
This is true.
Alright, any questions or comments?
The bridge situation in Raco, will there be any difference, I mean?
Uh, what's the Mullins would address?
Oh, okay, I've got one.
Regarding that. Alright, thanks, sir. Alright, thank you, Christian.
Sir, I can go ahead and there's, so, the, what was the question concerning the bridge at Raco?
Just what the plan is.
Yeah, so what we are looking at right now is doing the detour, actually, detouring trucks coming down to Gate City, going across, I believe it's on Jones, and then on across 72 to 71, or 71 to 72, then back up. So it's a, it's a long detour, there are shorter options for locals to travel, and I know they're familiar that that area does flood whenever you have a lot of rain, that happens a couple of times a year, maybe. So, the locals are kinda familiar with the shorter detours that they can take, but we will do a signed detour for trucks. Our intent is to have like either, probably either a citizens information meeting or a public hearing, just to cover that, because the initial public hearing did it with the onsite diversion, that's where we, we had determined that we will generate a significant cost savings by not doing that. There's also concerns about we'll have to replace a water line and maybe encounter some undercut in kinda that bottom area of the creek, so I think there's a lot of benefits to going this route, so that's kinda what we're proposing to do moving forward, and we would like to get the board's approval, their resolution of support. We can do that at the next meeting if you want to, after looking at it a little bit further, and hopefully, having that citizens information meeting and public hearing very soon, so.
Good to hear.
Alright, and so next, I have Mr. John Bowling, he's here to speak about some of the highway system changes. We, this was an, I guess, an audit, or not an audit, but a inventory correction, I think through central office. They've identified certain routes that we're needing to address through highway system changes, and so he has those to go over with you as the board, and we can go through any questions you may have on that. Alright.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Joey was saying, VDOT is in the process of doing a reconciliation on missing and erroneous inventory records, okay? Now, this is a statewide effort to try and get a proper accounting of our mileage that we're actually maintaining, okay? Some of the routes that are identified are older routes that still remain on the books for whatever reason, but VDOT has not maintained them in many, many years, okay? And there were five routes in Scott County that were identified as part of this process. And I sent a packet to Ms. Orange back in March, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look at the maps and stuff that I sent, but the question for the board was, well, I'm recommending that these routes be discontinued because some of them are larger tracks, and the right way could be used for access if these tracks were divided in the future, okay? Or subdivided. Some of them provide access to the river, River Fords. And there's also provisions at the county, you know, I don't know how much you're pushing agri tourism in this county, but discontinued right of ways can be used for like hiking, biking trails, things like that for public attractions, if you get the counties exploring any of those options, okay? Whereas, if you abandon a road, it goes away and it can never be re-added. If you discontinue a road, and then at some point, it reattains a public service to warrant state maintenance, it can be re-added to the system, okay? And because these are larger tracks, and because they access the river on two or three of them, I would recommend discontinuance on these routes. That will relieve VDOT of the maintenance responsibility, the regulatory authority for that right of way will be returned to the board, okay? And that, if these roads, they re-attain a level of service, which is typically three houses per mile to warrant VDOT maintenance, then at that point, they can be re-added, okay? The thing of it is, is that on some of these roads, when I did the field trip, there are parts of it that I couldn't even find a road bed. I didn't recognize a road bed, okay? I know for a fact that we haven't maintained these roads in over 20 years, but I'm betting it's closer to 50 years since they've been maintained.
And what, so any of these roads would be discontinued rather than abandoned, is that correct? It wouldn't be abandoned?
Well, that's a choice for this board, okay? Do you wanna discontinue these roads, or do you wanna abandon these roads?
Okay.
And the point I'm making is that if you abandon them, they're gone, and they can't be added back, okay? If you discontinue them, it gives the board and the property owners options in terms of subdividing or redeveloping their properties, or the county developing maybe tourism facilities for hiking, biking trails, that kind of thing.
We have these on our tablet here, can you go over those just individually briefly?
Sure. I've got the list here, okay, the first one is, it's a section of Route 664 from 1.04 miles west of Route 665, Mamble Road, to Route 643, Bellamy-Tipton Road. This section is 1.06 miles, okay?
I see the map there, can you, kinda just, you guys assume exactly where that's at? And I know we have the real numbers, but it's hard to make it out with this little diagram that we have.
Okay. Excuse me. If you get on Mamble Road going out of Gate City here, okay, turn left, you go out that way, you'll turn right on 643, and that is Bellamy-Tipton Road.
Okay, that's a Copper Creek Ridge, what we call the Copper Creek Ridge, is that what you're talking about?
No, it's that Copper Creek there.
You go to the top of Mamble Ridge, turn left.
Oh, top of Mamble?
Yeah, as you go, yeah, down the river, turn left to go all the way down to the end of the road, and then that's where the other...
You got much more than local knowledge.
I've been there.
As far as your discretion.
You can run around. You go, what they're gonna discontinue is the end of the road on top of Mamble Ridge, down to the road that comes up under the Spears Ferry Trestle, and comes over to Mamble. And there's not been anything in that, like you say, 30, 40 years.
And that, that is actually one of the ones that I couldn't find any evidence of a road bed. It's not even, I mean, you know, the county's DIS department doesn't even list this section as a road, so. We've got Route 667, best way to get to that one. Just off of Mamble Road, you're gonna, you're gonna make a left on, it's off of Route 666, Red Hill Road. It's sort of north of town. This is a section that also, there's no evidence on the ground of the road ever being there. Just historic maps is the only thing I really had to go on. The one thing about that one is that it does provide access to the river and a River Ford that can be used for public landing, for fishing boats, that kind of thing. Route 669, these last three are all pretty much off of 71, going back toward Russell County, okay? Route 669 is, it's about 3.4 mile, about three and a half miles north of 71, okay, to Route 670. It's basically from the dead end of what we're maintaining now, all the way through to Hail Spring Road. And it does include a River Ford on it. And that one accesses, you know, there are several tracks through there that that one accesses. I don't think that, I think discontinuance would be your only option for that road. But it's, there is a discernible road bed on part of it, I think it's being used for maybe farm access, okay? So, that one there, there's a little more evidence of the road being there on that one than there is any of the others. Route 672, this is a, just off of Branch Lane, which comes right off of 71. And Branch Lane goes up and dead end, but there is a paper street that continues on, all the way through and goes over to 671. The western section that connects to 671 especially is, there's no evidence of the road. There is a little bit of evidence of the road coming off the Branch Lane end, okay? But the, it's dirt road, it's not a gravel road, it's pretty easy to tell where VDOT has been ending maintenance on that section of Route 672. Route 673, you go just north of 672, it actually intersects there, and 673 is, what is the name of 673? Well, it comes off of Pondrosa Road. But it's a larger section that goes through a bigger farm. You can see pieces of where the old road bed was on the aerial photography, but there are places that you can't really find the road bed. But it's another one of those that accesses some larger tracks, and it could be used. If somebody were to buy these tracks, it would provide access to that. That's the big thing about discontinuance, with discontinuance, you don't lose legal access to a problem.
I'm hoping people that this will directly affect will come and... I'd have a public hearing, is that not correct, if we do any of this in the future? But I'm hoping they will come, and I guess they'll be notified that the landowners that I'm here from, like, there's a house on, if it's just one house, I mean, for instance, state maintained road, it should be, you said three, that's what you said per mile. Usually, you wouldn't want to discontinue?
Oh, well, the, the, the minimum public level of service to warrant VDOT maintenance for a single street road is three houses per mile.
Yes, three houses. But if I was only house there, and I had a state maintained road, I'd wanna keep it state maintained, so best I will discuss whenever the time comes.
Well, and because this is discontinuance, this is actually a VDOT public hearing.
Right.
Okay, this is a public hearing that VDOT is responsible for. The big point of presenting this stuff to you here today is to answer any questions that you might have, and let you know that, hey, we're recommending that they be discontinued. If you all study them and you think they should be abandoned or anything like that, well then, we need to know that before we go forward with the public hearing process, so.
I understand.
That's, I want to...
I'm hoping the people that will hear this and will come and express their concern, that's gonna directly affect them, you know? So it's something we need to, hopefully, to get the word out, and people know that this could happen, but, you know, we'll see how we stand here as a board, as to discontinue or, you know, or abandon. But anyway, it's not real big on abandoning or discontinuing either, if there is people directly affected by it, that's the road they're using.
Sure. What are the benefits, I mean, what are the, I mean, I know it's good for you all to keep track, what would be more benefits of discontinuing a road?
As opposed to abandoning the road?
No, no, I, I wouldn't be for abandoning, I think we'd need to just discontinue if, if that is what the people would want, but... I don't know what, for the state part of it, what is the benefit?
Well, in this effort that we're doing to clean up missing and erroneous inventory, it is, it's largely an administrative matter, an accounting matter, if you will, okay? To get an accurate road log of the mileage that we are maintaining, okay?
So it directly affects your all's budget, I guess, like?
It has, yeah, it has the capability to, okay? Southwest Virginia, our inventory was in pretty good shape, okay? We were, we didn't have a lot of mileage on the thing to, to, to deal with compared to some of the other localities throughout the state, but there was, I think, maybe 29 miles of road in all of the Bristol District, okay? And I've not seen it, but I've heard rumors of over 100 in others, so we're actually in pretty good shape. Discontinuance, as far as VDOT goes, you know, it's, to clean it up off of our books, to discontinue, or it has to be discontinued or abandoned, to take it off of our books, okay? To resolve the number error in terms of the roadway mileage, I guess is the best way to put it.
What would the cost savings be for the state to...
Sorry, I don't mind the address, most of these roads have not been, I mean, well, pretty much all of them have not been maintained.
So you've already got the benefit cost wise.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, I would say, saving anything, or by abandoning or discontinuing them, either way. It's just a matter of, like John had said, we're trying to correct in our system areas that we aren't maintaining that are showing that we are. And it is, it is part of just kind of the normal process, just making sure that we're formally documenting this, because it doesn't, we encounter them, you know, I know, me and myself on the land use side, we encounter things like this where there may be a section that isn't included, or should be included, or something. So this is, this is basically what this exercise through our central office is to address just any erroneous roads, and to make that an official change to match what we're actually seeing in the field.
Yeah, this action does not affect any standard of maintenance currently being performed by VDOT, okay? Roadway maintenance will continue as it always has, or at least for the past 20, 30 years, okay?
Do you know if there's legal descriptions of each of these, that we know where this road is, if we discontinue it?
They were, the legal descriptions were included on the maps that I sent.
So if we do a trail in 10 years, and we talk to the landowners, we know exactly the route? Because we ran into this going through Sheriff Buckets' land last year, or year before last, and we couldn't identify where this discontinued road was, so there's legal descriptions available?
That's, that's one of the gray areas, yeah, 'cause sometimes we don't have, I mean, the way, we will have deeds that say from the center line of the roadway. And so, when there's no road bed or anything to be able to tell that, then you're basically relying on a land surveyor or somebody to try to make that determination off of any records that they have. So we can get into a little bit of a situation with those, so sometimes that might be when maybe an abandonment... So, sometimes that might be when maybe an abandonment may even be a better option. If they, then if the developer, I mean, if the landowner decides to develop it, then they can approach the county and VDOT as far as doing a subdivision plan or something like that to actually institute, put in a new, uh, right of way where they want to for the development. So-
Most of these routes are older routes that were probably incorporated by the BURDAT in 1932 and the BURDAT, okay? So, no, there's not a survey center line for the roads, okay? Which was pretty much the situation we had with Sheriff Puckett's place over there, okay? So, no, there's not a defined center line on the road, okay? Um, generally that has always been, um, the center of the general line of passage is the center of the right of way. And without proof to the contrary, the right of way width is 30 feet.
So, I guess your, your hope today is because of this, uh, this is a public hearing?
We haven't conducted the public hearing yet. I need to, I have to advertise the public hearing and-
Okay. Do you need a decision from the board which way we want to go on each one of these or is that what you're hopeful for?
Well, I mean, as part of this process, VDOT requires whatever action we take. We require, it's not a legal requirement, but it's a policy requirement that we get the board's support for whatever action it's taking.
Well, I agree with Danny for what Danny was talking about, especially this property may belong to some of these people that are, that are along that, uh, area. So, they would need to know, uh, if it was going to be abandoned or whatever, should go back to the rightful owner.
Well, and as a discontinuance, VDOT's responsible for, for conducting the public hearing, okay? If you abandon these roads, well, then that's the board's responsibility to conduct a public hearing for a secondary ban.
And John, if we do-
But we work together on this kind of-
Right, sir. Don't we do a combination of both if that ends up ultimately being a decision the board makes? It, do, do, will we do that as one combined public hearing that we advertise?
Yes, God would advertise it if that public hearing.
The one thing that, well, the one thing that, uh, that since I've been on this board, we've had to deal with is some of the road closures. And I tried to get 1,800 feet added to the VDOT system. It's on, uh, Lawson Stoughton Cemetery Road. And the road is maintained, the people live there. And even at one time, the VDOT trucks used it, goes into Star and Bluff, I tried to get that added. But VDOT wants to take away, but don't want to add anything, you know? But I would, I've tried every way I can, even Jackie, Chris, he drove the road and I drove it several times, you know, driving in there. The road is pretty good, it needs to be VDOT maintained. But they said, well, we're not going to add anything to the VDOT system. And so, but I, that was, we keep taking away, but we don't want to add anything. I know it's not, it's higher up than you, it's way up the ladder that that decision's been made, but, but that particular road, at one time even school buses used it, but it wasn't VDOT maintained. It's 1,800 feet is all it is. And the road is named, it's Lawson Stoughton Cemetery Road, or line, whatever it is. And, uh, but those people, and one guy, he spent $1,800, you know, to get gravel stuff on it, but trying to get that added into the system. We, we keep taking away, but we don't want to add anything in that system. We, as I said, it's a probably a, a higher up decision than, than me or you either one. But anyway, but keep it taken away or abandon or discontinue, then we don't want to add anything back. And that's just kind of a, kind of a sore spot for me because we need to, that needs to be done on that particular road. The people are using that road all the time, but it's, it's probably maintained. It's named, the county named it, and I'm on one system have, but they named that road. And, uh, as far as the road number, it's not, uh, I guess it ends wherever the end of state maintenance is. But anyway, that's just a concern I have. We keep taking stuff away, but we don't want to add anything back into the system.
And, and, I mean, we can certainly explore that. Um, there's options like a rule addition and that, and doing those projects there. We have, uh, processes in place to be able to add those in and certainly if-
But if you will, I'll tell you where it's at, where the Army Tank is, the War Memorial or next to Black Horse, where you get to, it's turn left.
Okay.
And it goes all the way into Star and Bluff, and I've traveled it many times. And it's well maintained, it's packed with paint, must have had paint.
Okay.
But then at one section, about 1,800 feet, it goes from, from the end of that road into the, uh, Star and Bluff area. It would be great for those people because it'd be quick access. Like I said, VDOT even used, used to, I think they do now, they've probably quit, but they have used, it's quick access to end of Star and Bluff. And so, something I'll look at and see what your thoughts are.
And, yeah, and that can be certainly something we can look at and possibly something to try to incorporate into the secondary, secondary six-year improvement program or something like that, uh, so we can definitely explore those options.
You wouldn't be correct.
Sure.
Those people have been trying for years to get that done, it just hasn't happened. I, I really thought I could, I thought, back in the day, you know, I told them I'd do anything I could, try to get it added, but I haven't been able to do that.
Okay.
But if you would.
Certainly.
But we will consider all of this, and we have the maps. I know pretty well where these places are that you all have presented, and I think most of the board here knows well, Scott County people. So, the map is not the best I've ever seen, but it's, but I've got a general idea where these places are.
It's best I can come up with, the info I had. I mean, there's a lot of these roads, I couldn't really tell where they'd been even.
Well, that's a deal like what Bill was talking about, uh, John Puckett, Bill trying to get his, that through the army, you know? Nobody have, don't have a clue where the right of way is, you know? That was the issue we had, was nothing surveyed, it just shows a line through the woods and that's about it as far as from that goes.
Well, it's basically the old road maps is pretty much all I had to rely on, on a lot of the location for this stuff. So, I'm sorry about the maps.
The next move we need to make though would be what, Fred? Do we just, uh, my work will do anything here today of course, but what would be our next move as far as this board?
He can tell you that better than me.
Well, uh, I, I think the big thing is, do you want to pursue discontinuance of them all, or is there any sections of it that you would want to ban? If you want, you know, if the board would, would prefer just exploring discontinuance of all of them, then at that point, I can go ahead and, I need to know what action it was going to take before I advertise a public hearing.
So, if we do that, if we do the discontinuance of all of them, does that put the monkey on our back from, from then forward?
No, if you vote to discontinue them all, then it's on me to do, conduct the public hearing and receive public comment and, uh-
So, there would just be roads there that would be discontinued? Uh, it doesn't go back to the property owners or anything like that?
The, the right of way would still, would be followed for, or, or to the county, yes. You, you would retain the county and VDOT would, uh, not have maintenance ownership of it.
I don't think I'd be comfortable in doing a package of discontinuance because if you have your public hearing and two people come in and say, well, for instance, down Mambo Ridge and one or two of those, it sounds like nickel steel, that could be developed eventually. And could these be broken apart after your public meeting to where we can look at them and, and, uh, we're going to say, we, we don't approve these to be discontinued, two or three, or we do approve two or three for discontinuance? You see what I'm saying? Could we wait until we see how the public hearing's going to hear from the people in Scott County about how they want to?
Well, we have to wait till we get a public hearing and we get public comment, I, I mean, you know?
So, we can't, we can't do anything until then.
I mean, but I, I think, I see what you're saying. Do we have to handle them all as a group?
Yes.
Okay, no, no. I mean, it's a little more, it's a, actually, it's a lot more time and effort, but if you want to handle them individually, we can't handle them individually.
So, that would have to be after a public hearing, correct?
Well, if you want to handle them individually, that means a public hearing for each one.
Uh, the, the way that I would recommend would be, we could hold one public hearing to go over all these. The board, what, what we would be doing is advertising our recommendations. We would be getting public, we wouldn't take action on doing these without having the public hearing first and getting, so after that public hearing, we may change some of these depending on the comments and stuff that we get back, um, or the feedback from the public, so.
And, and VDOT policy requires that we get a resolution from the board supporting the actions that we take.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not comfortable today with doing anything, to be honest with you, I'm not.
And I, and I, I didn't expect-
Yeah, I think today's meeting was just to be able to get this informed, you all, and, uh, we can go to the public.
Hopefully, to the media, so that people see this and then they'll develop interest in it, if it directly affects them, then they will, they'll be able to kind of voice their opinion. It's not long to do, it's going to directly affect them, with your public hearing or they come here and talk to us about it. Cause I'm not comfortable doing anything here today until we research and study, see what we, what the, the right option for those people living there.
Okay.
Okay.
Is these roads tied into the mileage of unpaved roads in Scott County?
No.
They're not on it?
No. The maintenance, the, the paving mileage, uh, that, that's based on what we're actually maintaining on the ground. These, this is largely an administrative matter to resolve paper street, more or less errors that we have.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's basically what it boils down to, is just the legal actual authority of, of having maintenance responsibility for a non-existent road. So, it's to try to resolve that situation.
And to officially remove that mileage from our log requires a legal action either of-
But, but it still really doesn't change the status on that property that lays out there. I mean, it would, it would still be a right of way or, or whatever.
Yes, nobody loses legal access to their property with a discontinuance.
That would go on to what, the county or the state?
The right of way?
Yeah.
The regulatory authority for it is returned to the county, it becomes the county.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah. Yeah. So, most of these are prescriptive easement routes, so the underlying fee ownership is still with the property owners. There's just a, an easement there over the old road for a public road. And in which case, if we discontinue it, then VDOT gives that regulatory authority back to the county.
So, anybody that has property here could still travel the road to, to the next property?
Public access. Um, as, as John presented, on most of these though, there's not even a semblance of a roadbed in many of the cases, so, um, they're not being actively used right now.
But now, there, there's a couple of sections that are over a mile long that access to bigger properties, and I would very much recommend discontinuance for those as a ban, as opposed to a ban.
Yeah, I'm not for abandoning any of these from what I've seen up, up front here.
Okay.
Discontinuance is one thing, that's kind of iffy, but, uh, abandon those, I wouldn't, I think it'd be the way to go, but we'll look at it.
Okay.
Ask the question.
Sure.
Um, so what if, what happens if, when you have your public hearing, you have a lot of people that show up that do not want this? What's your path forward at that stage? You know, what's your path? I mean, you've already identified these as ones that you would like to see discontinued, but what if these folks that own this property show up and they're very much adamant that they do not want this?
Well, what we do, we take the transcripts from the public hearing, okay? We take whatever the board recommends, whether you say yea or nay. We take the board's recommendation, we take the public comments because a discontinuance, the Commonwealth Transportation Board's the only one that can approve that. We would send that information to them, they would look at that information, and they would either say discontinuance is approved or dismissed. If you get a herd of people like that, you're talking about the, the disapprove of it, which would make me tend to believe that the board would not support such an action in that case. And in which case, CTV's going to dismiss it and they won't discontinue it.
And, and in a case like that, it may be that, so, let's say, how many did we get? Six, seven?
Five.
Five, okay, five. So, five routes, four of them went forward, then we could have the board to choose to go forward with those four, and then maybe we're having a, a second public hearing and doing a different scenario to address that one route or something after the, so that, that would be my recommendation in doing that would be, um, you could all, you could take action on four of the five if there was one that was particularly, um, had issues or what.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Joey?
Sure.
Was that all y'all had here today about this, or you have some other things you want to cover?
Unless John has anything else or, or any more questions?
Unless you guys got questions for me, no, I'm-
I just got a question. Y'all had started some time ago about coming here at our meetings, at least maybe a bi-monthly, you was trying to do that, or maybe once a quarter or something?
Yes, I, I believe the intent is to be attending once a quarter. I think we, we were here at the last meeting and, and this one, and definitely anytime that there's things like this in between. But, yeah, our intent is to, um, get back on a schedule of at least quarterly attendance.
Okay, I have one question.
Sure.
Uh, if you can answer this. I've submitted a lot of work orders, uh, in the last couple of months, probably about 14 of them. And I've only heard back on a couple of those. Those were just because of signage issues, but on the others, I have not heard a word and it's been over a month.
If, if you wish to, if you don't care to email me what, or, or just give, provide me a listing of what those work orders are?
Okay.
I'll check into it and we'll find out what's going on. Um, the, the typical timeframe for work order process is what we expect is for, like, if it's a, a maintenance issue assigned to our area, we want them to at least address it within 10 days of receiving the work order. Uh, of course, if it's an emergency or, or a, you know, big safety issue, they'll get out there sooner for it. Um, but if it's an ordinary maintenance issue, we expect the area to be in touch with the citizen within 10 days. Um, and then our, our, most of these, um, if there's any of them that are outside of 90 days, then those are, are flagged. We actually are tracking this system and making sure that we're addressing them. So, yeah, if there's any, if you, uh, in a month is, is probably a good point in time. If you haven't heard anything on them, definitely get in touch with us, um, you know, let me know what those are. I'll personally check in and find out what's going on with them.
Okay.
And, and just, uh, like I said, just if, if you can let me know which, what those work orders are, and I'll be, I'll certainly be glad to check on it and, um, try to get those resolved.
I think it's kind of a problem throughout our whole county, you know, with, with the streamlining of these things.
Yeah. I, I will say that Scott County does have a lot of work order, and, and we do have a lot of, um, gravel roads, so that's, it, we, we, um, we do try to address those as quickly as we can, but sometimes it, it is a little bit tougher, uh, in this county just with the workload to, to keep up with it, so. Um, but go, go ahead, I'm sorry. That, that, uh, that, that, um, you know, like I said, if there's any of them, you can, you can email me, email Paul, if there's something that, that's been put in and nobody's contacted or anything, um, we can definitely address that.
We had, oh, this, one other quick thing, a quick note. Um, this is, uh, about a mile up the AP Carter Highway, and there was one of the trees that was actually the road. I don't know if it was your crews or if it was a fire department that came out where this tree fell from the rain, the storm we had a couple of days ago.
Okay.
It was all the way across the road, okay, the AP Carter Highway.
Okay.
And that wood was basically sawed up and, and put back over in, in the ditch, which is really going to stop up, you know, the, the drainage systems and so forth. So, I, I don't know, I wouldn't have thought that VDOT would have done it, so I'm not sure who cut the tree.
Was it a couple of days ago? Was it that? Yeah, so sometimes they'll respond immediately to clear the roadway and then we'll actually come back to, to try to, you know, do the cleanup, um, especially if they're, if they're, you know, in, um, snow or, I'm sorry, storm response. Um, yeah, they'll come out there, they'll clear the roadway, but then, um, because we have to try to determine how we're going to dispose of the, of the wood and stuff, sometimes we have to chip it and take it to, um, a place to burn it or something like that. So, there's, that, that's, that's fairly typical, but I would expect they'll come out within the next week or two to actually clean up the rest of the site and get it out of, out of the ditch or anything like that.
Okay. Um, I just noticed, this is the last thing for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Dave's gone by, you know, supervisor would call, you know, VDOT and we'd, you know, have, you know, a good conversation with Jackie and, and different ones about the situations, but, um, and things would get taken care of. You know, once the streamlining is done, I know that's to help you guys, but I'm just wondering, you know, what's happened through that process? Cause I, I think it's with other supervisors here too, you know, I don't think I'm the only one have situations, you know, where potholes need to be failed, uh, filled up, trees cut or, uh, situations in the road. I know we've had a couple situations up the AP Carter Highway, for example, where there've been ditches cut all the way across the road. And then when that sinks in, you know, after they put pavement in, it sinks in, and then it just almost takes the front end of your car off you when you, when you go across that, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, that, I mean, certain- Yeah, I mean, certainly if there's anything of significance like that, that, you know, you're getting a lot of calls about, you can contact me or Paul directly. Okay, and we put them in, we put them in the system to be able to be addressed. The thing, we're, and that's the other thing too, is we are working with our areas and trying to get them used to the new system and everything. And that's something that I've expressed, is anytime that we do have something, if it's caught in by board or supervisor member, then we do try to, you know, give that a little bit extra attention and, because they've been contacted by the citizen, and we know that's important to them. So that's, we are trying to do our best with that. As far as, now, let's say like with the trees, we are exploring some different options. We're looking at trying to get maybe a bucket truck rental and actually do some of that ourselves with our state forces. We've had an issue with trying to get a contract in place to do some of that. So we're trying to be innovative with the budget that we've got and to try to address some of these maintenance issues. And hopefully, if we get more of those taken care of, especially doing that bucket truck, I think that will be, we're going to try to do that as like a regional effort, and that will help a lot with trying to address some of those before they actually become a problem in the roadway, maybe cut down on some of the callouts and stuff, so.
Do you have a phone number, Joey, that we can call you?
Sure, yeah. And I can provide it to Frida and she can distribute-
Don't announce it here.
That'll be, but certainly you can get in touch with me if you need to.
We can.
All right?
Yeah.
Have one quick comment on Methodist Camp Lane, they've had some issues, our concrete, Fort Blackmore getting left and washing that road completely out. They paved it, and the pavement lasted one rain, and it's gone, so Jackie's looked at it.
We are actually meeting today, in Methodist Camp, the pipe, yes. So we are meeting with Drainage to explore, we're wanting to put in a box cold ground to address that. And so, yeah, we're aware of it and I know-
Oh, do you worry about where you stood and where they were?
Yeah, we actually do have a meeting set up with Bristol Drainage today to look at that.
The one thing about that, I mean, if the asphalt, it goes away, it washes off in that rain.
Yeah.
The concrete, like a low water bridge, the water gets over it, and it's, when the rain is gone, it's still there.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, I know they're looking at everything they can, the problem is above there. I've been trying to get something up the creek, the creek is going to reroute down through there. The creek is full up there, but dealing with the environmental side of it, you cannot clean that creek out, it really needs to, it's a sharp left turn, and it's filled up. And the only thing, it's not, the reason it hasn't broke open, but it's some trees there, the root system is keeping in front of it. I would have looked at it, it's, but that's the problem, if that down there is abandoned, they really can fix the issue they've got. And so hopefully, they've come up with a good solution there.
Yeah, that's, I'm hopeful today, we are meeting with our district drainage engineer and trying to come up with a-
Well, tell them a thing-
Long-term solution, because yeah, it doesn't make any sense to go in and have to replace that pipe every time we have a big flood again.
It happens sometime, there's two times, two, three times a year.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right. Appreciate you coming.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item nine, and it's Department Housing, it's a DXCD interim agency agreement with City of Norton. City of Norton is the physical agent of that money, and the way it shook out, it was, you know, City of Norton is 300,000, Lee County 500,000, Scott County 500,000, Wise County 300,000, reason Wise County's less is because they'd already got 200,000. This is grant money to help the small businesses, to, to get the money, I think it's up to $15,000 per business if they apply for it. Hopefully, the small business people will take advantage of this. So this agreement is agreement with us, because Norton is the physical agent of this money, so it's an agreement with them to do that. And hopefully, this will help some business in the county. Did you want to speak on that, Ms. Arndt, do we need to talk anything more about it than that?
Well, can you say it out?
I tried, I can't read, so.
We need authorization for me to sign the agreement.
And the agreement is in your package, that's all it is, authorize her to do that. And of course, the City of Norton is the physical agent, that they're, the money's coming to them. And Lee County and Wise has to do the same thing with them for City of Norton to be the physical agent of that money. I think it's 1.7 million total with 500,000 coming from Scott County. All righty, any discussion, I don't think we need to talk a lot about it, but anyway, so you know what, we're not here to authorize this agreement.
Chairman, I'd like to have a motion proven, allow administrator to sign.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ted, make a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Herron, second, any discussion? All for everybody, say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Next item is item 10, Duckville Days Fireworks Permit. Do we usually approve these? I don't remember doing this before.
Yeah, we approve it every year, usually.
Why don't I remember, am I that old? Anyway, I don't remember, I don't-
You wanted to ask that question.
I know, and, but I don't mind it, but anyway, we need to do that and approve this. So are we actually approving the permit?
Yes, and on your tablet there, you also have the certificate of liability insurance that's supplied and the permit, so you can see what it looks like.
Right, y'all looked at it, and I'll be everybody else has too, so. Anyway, they're not going to have the festival, I don't think, but they are going to have the fireworks, is that correct, Ms. Arndt?
Fireworks is the only event.
It's the only event they're going to have, yeah.
And that'll be this Saturday at 9:30 PM.
Okay. 9:30. Anyway, a good thing that they're, and so we need to motion approve this permit.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
All right, Mr. Ted made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second, any discussion? All for everybody, say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried, I'll remember it next year. Next item is the Mountain Empire Elder Citizens Walk-a-thon, and they, and my neighbor, he takes advantage of this. It's a good thing for what they dedicate, it's a fundraiser, what it is, and they're asking money from us to help with that, with the cost of that.
Right, it's not on your tablet, but it's in your package.
Right, it's 5,000 they're asking for, I think.
That's correct, and last year, they assisted 174 individuals from Scott County, and that was during the period November 1st, 2019, to March 31st, 2020, and the total expense was $45,903.3 to help the Scott County residents.
What did we give last year? Do you remember?
Five, I believe.
Yeah, five, that's good. Folks, it is, my neighbor, he uses coal, and he's the recipient of this, and a lot of elderly people are. Yeah, it's like a lady one time asked me to help her get a wood stove, she didn't ask for anything fancy, and I did. And so these people that are actually burning coal and wood, and it helps them with that. And there are other things too, they're doing it, and so, anyway, you've got to admire people that will do that. Still, they always do it because they're willing to do that, they do help with fuel assistance, and it's a good thing, so. Any other discussion here for many of you?
If you funded it, would need to come from board contingency.
All righty, discussion or make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
For? 5,000.
For the 5,000.
From our contingency fund. Mr. Herron has made a motion on the 5,000 dollars from the supervisor's contingency fund, he's made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Krueger, second, is there any discussion?
The one, one thing we need to remember, they weren't going to be able to have the walk-a-thon, you know, so that was one of the, that's right, as far as I know.
That's correct.
I didn't know that part, I guess.
So they're going to lose that, so this will, this will help them-
Yes.
To continue doing what they're doing.
Right. All right, we have a motion, second, any discussion? All for everybody, say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried, 174 people or families that have picked up on that from last time, probably that meant this time too. Next item is the Solid Waste Center discussion, Ms. Arndt, take the lead on that, we talked about it, if you would, please.
Today, we'll start phase, we'll call it phase one, the solid waste centers. And the request is the consideration of closing the moccasin gap, solid waste site temporarily during the road construction of the 23 Access Project that Mr. Mullins spoke about earlier. And that would affect approximately 18 homes on Filter Plant Road. They're not in the town of Weber City, they're not in the town of Gate City, they're county residents, so they do not have household trash pickup. And you know, they, they're right there at it. So it's approximately 18 homes. The closure would come about around September 19th or September 26th. If it's something that you're interested in doing, we would need, you know, to redistribute those dumpsters to other sites in the area. So we would like to get those moved before the road closures begin. And the two part-time employees would be utilized at different sites within the county. We've talked about that internally, where we would put them for better utilization. So those are a couple of the bullet points that I had on the project or the request.
It's only tough getting in and out of there with those lane closures, and it's going to be really hard getting in and out.
It's dangerous.
And that was the reason for that. I was hoping we'd come up with a different place to locate temporarily, but I guess there's not any place we have that we could do that with the settlement.
And this site's actually on VDOT property, we don't own that site anyway.
I was thinking, is there any way they could put them, say, the Thriftway parking lot or somewhere where they could put, it's not-